Hey, well, hello, everybody. Call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The meeting is being conducted in person at the Springfield Township Administration Building. This meeting is also being offered in a live stream feature and will be made available on the township website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance were provided as part of the posted agenda. So now please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silence reflection, honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Mr. Rust. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please report unanimous vote. Okay, I will note the absence of Commissioner Harbison tonight, and we have no substitute professionals, I don't see. And there's Mr. Shaw in the, there is Commissioner Shaw, who was in attendance, our former commissioner. And Don Berger is here. Or manager. So make a few announcements. I'd like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session following the workshop meeting held on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to discuss one matter of continued litigation. Okay, my next announcement is the Springfield Township Community Day celebration will take place on Sunday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, from ten a.m. to one p.m. at Cisco Park, and will be preceded by the Erdenheim Civic Association five K Race and Fun Run, beginning at nine a.m., food, entertainment, fishing, fire equipment displays, and a petting zoo will be provided free of charge. Community Day is made possible via the generous support of our business community. That's that. And what I'd like to do now is just, I want to kind of wrap up some of the some, you know, some, some items and, and, and provide a little bit of a public statement on what's been going on with the Hawes Lane project. And as we all know, we've had quite a few meetings, and if anybody has been, you know, following emails and stuff, we've been entertaining a lot of questions, and there seems to be a little bit of confusion. So I'm just going to try to wrap this up for everybody, kind of give everybody an idea of what's kind of going on and, and where we're going with that. So the first thing is, let me just sort of give you a little sort of, you know, primer or primer on, on how projects can get, get approved in, in our township or in Pennsylvania. And the first way, which is hopefully the easiest way, is you, you attempt to comply with all the zoning regulations. And the way zoning regulations come about is that we, as the board, vote on or have voted on the regulations through an ordinance. But then at that point, the adjudicator of those, of those regulations are not us anymore. It's the zoning hearing board. So if you don't, if you comply, you literally do not need to do anything for, for, you know, to get approval for a project. And as an example, you have a small, let's say subdivision or something, you would go to our zoning hearing officer, our zoning officer, and have him review it. And if he says it's fine, then, you know, we just kind of give you the stamp of approval. And it, if it's, if it's a land development, it still has to go through planning, but it's approved at that point. So the next point, the next way of doing this is if it doesn't comply, if a developer, a builder decides that they want to do this, but there are reasons why they need variances or exceptions or conditional uses, or there are all sorts of ways of sort of, you know, bending the rules. And typically, what you have to do is explain to the zoning hearing board that you have a hardship. And an easy hardship, if you can imagine, this is something like you have a, let's say, most people have a square lot and you have a setback. But let's say you have a building and the lot narrows down to a kind of a point, and you just can't fit your building into that point. So you're going to go to the judge, or the, I'm sorry, the zoning hearing board, and you're going to say, could you please give me a variance? Because except for the fact that this thing narrows down to a, you know, a three-inch, you know, plane, I would, I would, you know, comply with your, your rule. And if they think it's hardship, they'll grant it, and that will run with the property, and you can do what you want with that property. So, and then the third thing is, the third way to doing this is through, let's just say, a developer decides that, you know, if they were to go to the zoning hearing board and ask for a variance, because literally the use of the property does not comply with the use that's actually, you know, designated by the zone, they're going to, they would, and they would probably get denied by the, by the zoning hearing board, they would come to us and say, would you do us a favor? If, you know, we do this, this is, and, and show you that we are, are building a stellar property, a project that's going to be better than anything else you would build under the zoning hearing, under the zoning laws, would you give us a text amendment or provide an overlay? And again, there are different ways of doing that. In that case, that's what we do. We would have a public hearing. We would provide everybody with, with that new tax amendment or ordinance or whatever it is, and everybody can weigh in on that. And then and that's how that works. Doesn't happen that often. But that is one way of doing it. So and then the other thing is that, you know, just to clarify that the distinction between zoning and planning. So zoning, when something goes to zoning, it zoning kind of regulates density limits, mostly it's area limits and density and that sort of thing. Planning has much more to do with engineering. It has to do with stormwater, making sure that once a builder has his approvals, he's going to do all those kind of things, all those best management practices that are required to make sure that stormwater is handled and lighting is handled, and the parking works well from a circulation point of view. And, you know, all those kinds of things, at which point, you know, we, we take it to a planning commission and, and the, the the audience can, the citizens of our township can come in and weigh in on that sort of thing. But at that point, the project is already approved. So that's a little bit of how, how this all works. So let me give you a little history on what happened with the Hawes Lane project. Many moons ago, the, a piece of land was sold off to a group that wanted to build a assisted living facility. And they got an approval for a hundred and seven units. And that was through the zoning hearing board. And that was challenged in court, and I don't have all the details about that. What I can tell you is that at one point, they decided they weren't going to do that. They were, I suppose they were going to sell the property, but they did ask us, the Board of Commissioners, for an extension on, you know, the, the, the the plan, like when it would expire. We denied that, and lo and behold, that plan actually expired about a month and a half ago or two months ago.
Point of clarity?
Yes.
Back when that was, when that took place, did that actually sell, or was that just under contract by the, by the facility?
Good question.
I believe it was the Hart Trans family that secured the approvals, and it was unclear whether they intended to develop it themselves or flip it.
And either a transfer never occurred?
No.
So then what happened was they
Excuse me, but a subdivision did.
Subdivision occurred before the land development.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because he had, Mr. Hart Trant had an option to purchase the property back under his agreement with the Harston Hall property.
That's right. So then what happened was they, they sold it to, I guess, MEH, and I don't know if there was anybody in between, you know, the first buyer and the second, but MEH wound up with it. We understood that they, they were looking for somebody to build it. They, they decided that it might be a better idea if they were to build it not as in an institutional use, but actually provide a fifty-five and over apartment house. And I think the number of units they came up with was something like, it was a hundred and two, a hundred and three, it was very close to the and, you know, as a matter of courtesy, what we do is we, we, they say, you know, this is what we were, we have in mind, and we say, fine, why don't you present this to, you know, our, our citizens? And at that point, and this was about two years ago, maybe three years ago, I can't remember, but in any event, they presented it, and pretty much their project got shot down by everybody. And they basically backed off the project. So fast forward, you know, a while, they came back to us and said, well, we do have some assisted living people looking at it, and we think that's what we're going to do and try to comply with zoning, and it won't need any, you know, permission from anybody. But that didn't happen either, and the COVID thing came along. And at that point, they asked if either the township or the school board would want to purchase the property. The school board, their, their basic position is they will not purchase a property unless they have a specific use for the property. That's what they told us. And they didn't, so they didn't do anything. We, through our grant master, Brandon Ford, served time low for some, some funds to, to finance such a purchase, and we found none. And it turns out that, as an example, Natural Lands Trust will, you know, buy land, they're, they're looking at buying big parcels of land in the Northeast, you know, many, many acres, but, but this is a very small property, it's just under their radar, and they just, they or anybody else, they just don't have the, the funds. And the other thing that we could have done is, is purchase it. You know, if we were to purchase it, it probably would have been something in the, in the neighborhood of a quarter of our yearly budget. We certainly don't have a cash for that. And as far as raising, you know, funds for it, by, by floating a bond or something, borrowing money, the thing is, we've already floated a pretty substantial, you know, bond or, or, you know, we now have, you know, some bank financing for the municipal campus, and it's really a tight squeeze to do that, plus it would certainly raise taxes for everybody in the township. So we didn't do that either. So then more time went by, and MEH decided that they, they brought in a housing developer, specifically a developer of townhouses. And again, they said, would you entertain that kind of a project, you know, with the idea that if people are okay with this project, maybe we'll do a text amendment or some kind of a thing? And we said, well, why don't you run it by the public? And we had a public hearing, not a public hearing, we, we went through the planning commission, and that was back in June. And at that point, they offered a project that was forty-one units. And pretty much to a man and/or woman, you know, in the, in that, that audience, they, they, they told us under known certain terms that they didn't like that project. And so they went back to the drawing board, and then two months later, they came in with another plan, you know, whereby they had dropped, I think it was five units. So they got down to thirty-six units. And again, same kind of thing happened. We didn't get any real support for that project. We didn't get a lot of comment about how that would compare to institutional use. But be that as it may, they told us last week, at the end of last week, that they were going to retract that project. Now, what they did do is they came in on, into our workshop on Monday, and I guess it was just sort of one, one last sort of stab at trying to figure out what people really felt, you know, if they were to, let's say, re-engineer this a little bit more and, you know, look at it specifically with respect to, is this better or worse and, and a institutional use? What does the audience think? And I would say that that was somewhat inclusive. Some people said, well, townhouses seem better. I wouldn't mind that if it were twenty units, but, you know, thirty-two units or thirty-five units or something like that is way too much. Some other people just don't want to see anything built there at all. And some people got up and said, you know, I don't really have a problem with institutional use. We, you know, there was somebody who, I think, a nurse-trained nurse said that, you know, she, she works in a certain facility that is just fine, and it's, and they handle this traffic and everything well, and she could envision same kind of thing happening at this. So that was the last we've heard from that group. So I will just say that at this point, you know, I, I, I won't say that they won't come back and talk to us, but I would say that the chances of, of that happening with respect to a town, townhouse project are, you know, much lower than they have been. And what they tell us is that they are going to go ahead and pursue a, an institutional use of some sort, and they believe that they can find somebody that can come in and do that by right, meaning they can comply to all the zoning regulations that apply to that site, which means that nobody will have the opportunity to, you know, debate them on that, because they'll have the right to do it. Certainly, when it gets into the planning and engineering stage, everybody can weigh in at that point, but that's basically where we are. So that is sort of, you know, as far as Hawes Lane is concerned, sort of the state of, of, of the world as I know it or as we know it right now. So just wanted to kind of make those clarifications, and thank you for, you know, that, that time explaining that. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a couple of really exciting resolutions. And the first one is, I'd like to invite Don Sirianni, retired Public Works Director, to the front of the room to be joined by Commissioner Lee. Wait for your order. From the room. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Lee to read into the
The microphone, so they can hear you.
There we go. So I'd like to ask Commissioner Lee to read into record Resolution Number fifteen forty-four, forty-four, a resolution honoring Donald G. Sirianni, Jr. for forty-six years of service to the Springfield Township community.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have pleasure of sharing Resolution Number fifteen forty-four, a resolution honoring and thanking Donald G. Sirianni, Jr. for his service to Springfield Township, Montgomery County. Whereas in nineteen seventy-two, Donald G. Sirianni, Jr., Don, the seventeen-year-old Springfield Township High School resident student, excuse me, was hired by Springfield Township as a part-time seasonal laborer in the Public Works Department. Whereas on January first, nineteen seventy-five, Don became a full-time member of the Springfield Township Public Works Department, performing every function within the department, including laborer, truck driver, inspector, and assistant director of Public Works. Whereas in two thousand and thirteen, Don was promoted to the position of the Director of Public Works, became a member of the senior management team for Springfield Township. And whereas during his tenure as Director of Public Works, he created a team atmosphere among the employees, focused on effective systems of service delivery, strive to instill efficiencies in all operations, updated equipment, buildings, and public facilities. And whereas Don served on countless civic and professional boards, commissions, and emergency agencies, thereby gaining the respect of his peers and colleagues. Whereas Don played an integral part in the design and construction of the new Springfield Township Municipal Complex. And whereas Don's public service extends beyond his employment with the township as a member of the Orland Volunteer Fire Company Number One since nineteen seventy-four, he served as deputy chief since nineteen ninety-two and treasurer since nineteen eighty-eight. Whereas Don, whether he was assisting in the management of a response to an emergency condition in the township, preparing a facility for a community celebration or supporting a volunteer athletic association, he did so fully without hesitation and without recognition. And whereas Mr. Sirianni was required to be away from his wife Laura, and children Andrew and Christina, on many nights, weekends, and holidays in order to serve Springfield Township. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners has hereby recognized, command, and wholeheartedly thank Mr. Sirianni for forty-nine years of dedicated service to the Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes to Don and his family in retirement. Unanimously adopted this fifteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners, signed by Barrett M. Standish, President. So resume
I can take a minute of your time?
Yeah, please.
Well, thank, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to, and this board and all passports, the opportunity to work here for Springfield Township. I've enjoyed my employment here, and thank you for the support you gave us throughout the years, through funding, through equipment, through manpower. Thank you very much. The only thing I'd ask is maybe we should have built this building a little sooner. Could enjoy it a little bit more, but thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the employees. The whole township is always more special to Public Works Department than the actual, we have twenty-eight in the department. They're actually the, the guys that actually do all the work around here. It's a small crew, but they, they do a lot, and they've been fantastic to work with. And lastly, my family. As the resolution said, the time I spent away with my two children going up, I know my daughter's ninth birthday is when we had the flood in ninety-six. So that was, and then all like the ice storms, they were trapped at home, I was trapped at work, and we never got really a chance to sit back and watch it snow together. But thank you for putting up with me, and appreciate it. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number one five four four. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or?
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
That's right.
I'll just make a quick comment, you know, been on the board a relatively short period and just, in a short time, just getting to know Don just a little bit. He was so gracious and helpful, and of all the complaints we get, very few are ever about Public Works. Seriously, the crown jewel, and just I'm proud to brag about it, about our Public Works Department.
Amen.
Great. Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That's great. Thanks, Don. Okay, so next, I would like to invite Commissioner Glenn Shaw to the front of the room to be joined by Commissioner Maxwell. And I would ask Commissioner Maxwell to read into the record Resolution Number fifteen forty-five, a resolution honoring Glenn A. Shaw for twenty-two consecutive years of service as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I read this, I just read this when I sat down, and there's two words that I see in here, mentor and friend. I had the privilege of working with Glenn for four years, and I can honestly say, sitting next to him, working, and that's why I felt as a mentor and friend. And Glenn, I'm honored to be reading this here tonight. Resolution Number one five four five, whereas Glenn A. Shaw has been a resident of Springfield Township for nearly fifty years, and whereas Mr. Shaw was an active member of the community in many ways, including but not limited to the Orland Volunteer Fire Company and Orland Town Watch. And whereas Mr. Shaw was sworn in as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township in nineteen ninety-eight, faithfully serving for twenty-two years as a representative for Board Three. Whereas during his term, Mr. Shaw served as the president and vice president of the Board, and the chairman of Public Safety and Public Works Committees. And whereas Mr. Shaw's twenty-two years of service stands today as the longest consecutive term of any member of the Board of Commissioners dating nineteen oh four. And whereas in two thousand and eleven, Mr. Shaw was recognized by the Montgomery County Public Works Association as a recipient of the William Stewart Award for outstanding service. And whereas his fellow commissioners and township staff relied on his leadership, skills acquired as an officer of the fire company, and his expertise in emergency management to ensure the safety of the Springfield Township community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has recruit, recruited Glenn to continue his service to the community as an alternate member of the Police Civil Service Commission. Whereas Mr. Shaw was committed to long-term sustainability of Springfield Township, leading the township through the master planning, construction, and financing plan of its new municipal campus, as well as the creation of an emergency management response plan, and an emphasis on stormwater management. And whereas Glenn will always be a mentor and a friend to leaders in the Springfield Township community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, joins the Springfield community in recognizing the contributions and the outstanding leadership of Glenn A. Shaw in our community. Unanimously adopted this fifteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-one, Board of Commissioners, Springfield Township, Barrett M. Standish, President.
All right, all right.
So I'll be very brief. First, twenty-two years. It's didn't seem that long. I had hoped for twenty-five years, because I think I would have got the gold watch.
Yes, yes.
But I got the mask for twenty-two. But in all seriousness, I couldn't have done it without all of you. There, you're next in line, Jeff, Mike, Don. Don was the best. I mean, taught me so much. It's, I'll share one little thing Don taught me that impacted me tremendously. We were talking about a project and talking about financing in, in my early days, and when we talked about financing, the money is huge, you know? I mean, we're talking millions of dollars, and, you know, I'm not a millions of dollars guy. So I'm like, Don, you know, I'm really nervous, and Don says, wait a minute. You know more about the project than anybody in the audience or anybody in the community. You've studied it, you understand it, you know, be confident in yourself. And I always remembered that. So thank you, Don. Thank you, board. Barrett, thank you. Donovan? Michael? Thank you. Boss?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I moved that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number one five four five. Do I have a second?
Second, I can.
Great. Any comments? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay. I'd like to invite Don Berger, our retired township manager, to the front of the room to be joined by Commissioner Graham. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Graham to read into the record Resolution Number fifteen forty-six, a resolution honoring Donald E. Berger, Jr. for thirty-nine years of service to the Springfield Township community.
Before I read this resolution, I'd just like to say that be, when I first got elected, Don was really not only a great township manager, but a close personal friend that kind of walked me through all of the nuances of this office, and I could not have asked for a better mentor, but more importantly, a better friend and family member. He was very close. So saying that, Resolution Number one fifteen forty-six, a resolution honoring and thanking Donald E. Berger, Jr. for his services to Springfield Township, Montgomery County. Whereas Donald E. Berger, Jr. Whereas Donald E. Berger, Jr., Don was hired as the Springfield Township County Code Enforcement Officer in eighteen ninety. I mean, I'm sorry.
There you go, eighteen ninety, yeah.
My glasses get fogged up when I breathe in this there. My apologies. In nineteen eighty, served in that position until nineteen eighty-three. And whereas in nineteen eighty-three, Don was promoted to the position of Assistant Township Manager, a position he held until December nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas Don was appointed as Township Manager slash Secretary effective January the first nineteen eighty and factually served in that position until his retirement in July twenty nineteen. And whereas during his tenure as Township Manager, Don also served as the Township's Emergency Management Coordinator, calmly steering the township through countless snowstorms, snow events, and other natural, natural and man-made disasters. And whereas Don was responsible for creating one of the first curbside recycling program in the Commonwealth to serve Springfield Township and served as a model for other municipalities across the state. And whereas Don was asked to and did humbly serve on various professional commissions and associations and committees to promote good local government, enhance intergovernmental, intergovernmental relations, and ensure reliable and sustainable public service. Whereas Don imparted knowledge and wisdom to those he mentored, compassion, and selflessness to those in need, and inspiration and encouragement to those he led. And whereas Don's unwavering commitment and willingness to understand and respond to the concerns of the residents of Springfield Township has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of the township of Springfield. And whereas Don gained the unqualified respect of all commissioners of Springfield Township, past and present, through his professional management and personal demeanor. And whereas Don and his lovely wife Debbie are lifelong residents of Springfield Township where they chose to raise their three bright, caring children in their likeness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners in Springfield Township, Montgomery County, does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Donald E. Berger, Jr. for thirty-nine years of dedicated service to the Springfield Township community and also extends its best wishes for a long, healthy, and happily, and happy retirement. Unanimously adopted this fifteenth day of September, the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners Township signed by President Barrett M. Standish.
All right, all right.
Okay, so, so this just point of protocol here, I am going to move to the Board of, the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen forty-six and ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay.
Already messed up by saying you were older than you were.
So don't go anywhere because I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Graham to unveil the portrait of Mr. Burger.
Oh, yeah.
In the lobby of the Township Administration Building.
Look at that, all right. Yeah, that's great.
That is nice.
That's a little scary.
You know, they're going to put that on the two-dollar bill, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's just, that's the model, right? The real one is six feet by ten. That's the, that's the prototype.
Statue, yeah. Yeah.
You might want to keep that close or like when the little boys and girls come through on the floor.
The greatest.
Well, thanks much, Mike, for all these. And I appreciate it. I guess it's Don saying, nobody, that is, done any jobs both themselves. It's the Board of Commissioners, it's the residents on the street, it's the department head, it's the guy who lives in the public works, the library folks. Everybody just shift in. That's been so cool about Springfield is everybody willing to help each other and be a part of the team and be a part of the mission. Very infrequently where there, I mean, there are great debates on whether it's go one way or another, but once a decision was made, it was all it. And it really would made it easy and fun. I learned this about there. Several years, tired of covering the ball and getting ready for his job. So I really appreciate it and thank you very much. And that's good.
Good man. Yeah, 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 well deserved.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Good seeing you. Good.
Thank you, Don.
Good. Okay. Before you go, I just wanted to say one thing. My name's Jim Garrity. I'm the Township Solicitor. And because of what I do, the kind of law I practice, I'm in a dip, I'm in a different township building almost every weeknight, literally dozens, if not a couple hundred in Bucks, Chester, Montgomery, and Delaware Counties. And wherever I go, when they find out that I also represent Springfield, they, before I even say anything, they say, oh, you got Don Berger, you've got the best.
Yeah, there you go. Mr. President, I just wanted to say one thing as well. One thing I find that beyond the years that these three gentlemen have given to Springfield Township, they really are all cut from the same piece of wood. And they're all just extraordinary gentle men. And one thing that is extraordinary to me is that when we have problems or issues come up in the township, to have the institutional knowledge that these three individuals in particular brought from their experience, having grown up in the township, having seen all the problems they did. We are such an incredibly better township because of the stewardship of those three individuals and the teams that they led. So I just, I think it's extraordinary. I just wanted to thank you all again for your service because you really are just gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Good. Now you're dismissed.
Yeah, that's right. Now you're dismissed, right?
There you go.
Do you want to hear about the recycling report?
Yeah, yeah. We're doing better. We're doing better on recycling. Who's left? Carol.
Can we stay?
Carol's staying? No, no, no. It's good. That's, it's a good picture. I think it's a good picture.
Excellent picture.
It's a really good picture, yeah.
Oh, we should have noted it. We'll write you up a quick plaque.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Think of the size.
She's got to type it up.
I'm writing it now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, did you? Okay, okay.
Very cool.
That's great.
Wow. Okay, so here we go. This is now, we are now into the public portion of the meeting. The board is also now open to comments or questions from the public. The board, yeah, the board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And Brendan, do we have any emails or questions from the, from the ether? No? Okay. Any, anybody in the audience? No? Okay, well, thank you. We will then move on to the committee reports and I will read my, my report first. This is concerning resolution number fifteen forty-one, the Laverock subdivision. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen forty-one, a resolution approving an amendment to the rec, record plan for the Laverock Springfield subdivision. The subject of the amended plan is for the limited purpose of adjusting the lot line between lot number one and the common open space for the development. The lot line adjustment will allow the rear yard of lot number one to align with the adjacent lot number, numbered twenty-six through thirty-two and is possible due to the relocation of the emergency access driveway as requested by the township. So that is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. Concerning resolution number fifteen forty-two, the Freilich slash five oh one Birch Lane subdivision is a two-lot subdivision slash lot line change that increased the size of the parcel located at eighty-seven hundred Montgomery Avenue to one point six-three acres and decreased the size of the property located at five oh one Birch Lane to point nine eight acres. As part of the subdivision, the Freilich's owners of both parcels agreed to dedicate to the township a twenty-five-foot ultimate right-of-way measured from the center line of Birch Lane. Therefore, I move the board, that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen forty-two, a resolution accepting the deeds of dedication for additional right-of-way along the east Birch Lane frontage of eighty-seven hundred Montgomery Avenue as well as five oh one East Birch Lane, Windmore. And that is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please by, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. And then next final item is I move the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of the Montgomery County Planning Commission through a professional planning assistance contract for the years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. The county provides planning assistance for the review of all subdivision and land development applications as well as structured assistance as requested by the township and recommended by the county. The twenty twenty-two through twenty-four contract includes continued assistance to update the township subdivision and land development ordinance as well as the development of a trail network plan and to begin to update the twenty fourteen comprehensive plan. The costs associated with the contract are shared equally by Springfield Township and Montgomery County. The township share in twenty twenty-two is fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars in twenty twenty-three. It is twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and in twenty twenty-four, it is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So that is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just to kind of connect this with what we were talking about earlier about some of these other development projects in the, in the township. What this engagement with the county enables us to do is to kind of update that sort of broader comprehensive plan that we have in place and dust off and bring it more up to kind of where we are today. So I think it's a, it's a good thing that we're doing this.
It's a great thing.
Particularly with regards to the, the trail system.
Yep. It's a great thing.
Just a question. What year, how long has this agreement been in place? I know this is a renewal. I assumed there were other renewals.
Yes.
No, we've been.
Well. As far as you know. Entire twenty-five years that I've been working.
Yeah, yeah, long time.
So and it's pride of that.
We know any municipalities that don't, that don't have a similar agreement with the county?
Sure, there's others that do not, but quite frankly, they're kind of foolish. I mean, because it's a deal. You get fifty percent of the cost paid for.
Right.
And they're very talented people and very caring. They have access to the grant funds that you need to complete some of your projects.
That's great. Mike Johnson, it's great that we have the trail piece.
Yeah, it's really great. Yep. And I know we've had some people clamoring for, you know, looking at open space and that sort of thing with respect to the comprehensive plans. And now we can dig in on that too. So great. Okay, so that concludes my report and Commissioner Harbison is not here.
You need to vote on that?
We do.
We do. I'm sorry. Yeah, we do. So I made the motion. So do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any questions, comments? We've already had some. Okay, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. All right. So that concludes my report and Commissioner Harbison is not here. So Commissioner Wilson is going to read Commissioner Harbison's report and then go into his report, go into Commissioner Wilson's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have six items tonight and including five of Jeff's and one of mine. But the first is the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the August check reconciliation in the amount of five hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. And the September bill listing in the amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty, sixty-seven cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
My next item, Mr. President, is the announcement for the twenty twenty-two budget schedule. And I'm, I'm pleased to announce that the following dates will be using for the twenty twenty-two budget. First one is meeting with support agencies Wednesday, September the twenty-second at seven P M. The second one will be the budget workshop meeting Wednesday, October the twentieth at seven P M. The next one is the budget presentation, which will take place on Wednesday, November the tenth at seven thirty P M. Next one will be the budget hearing, which will take place on Wednesday, December the eighth at seven thirty. And lastly, the budget adoption, which would be Wednesday, December the eighth at seven thirty. And please note that all these meetings will be held at the Springfield Township Administrative Building, fifteen-ten Springfield, Paytonville Road, Windmore. So right here, all those. My next, my next item is, is resolution number fifteen forty-three, Pension Fund MMO. And the Board of Commissioners has a statutory obligation to adopt a resolution setting forth the municipal, the minimum municipal obligation to properly fund the township employees' pension plans and to incorporate the minimum municipal obligation into the succeeding year's township budget. So therefore my motion is that I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one-five-four-three, a resolution establishing, establishing the twenty twenty-two pension fund minimum municipal obligation for, for the three defined benefits and one defined contribution pension plan. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next item is a report on the township auditors and a resolution. I move the Board of Commissioners reappoint B. Burgvall and Company certified public accountants to serve as the township's auditors to audit the township's financial statements for the year beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, consistent with the audit engagement letter dated September seventh, twenty twenty-one. The cost of the engagement is twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which is a two-point-one percent increase more than it was for twenty twenty. The twenty twenty rate of twenty-three thousand was the same as was charged in twenty nineteen. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, the third of Jeff's reports, uh, is on the tank car property. And I'm pleased to report on May the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Honorable Jeffrey S. Salz, Judge of the Court of Common Pleas from Montgomery County, issued a decision in the matter involving Springfield Township's condemnation of property owned by Tank Car Corporation of America, seventeen twenty-five Walnut Avenue, Orland. The court's decision established the just compensation and fee reimbursement requirements to be paid by Springfield Township as the condemnor to Tank Core Corporation of America as condemnee pursuant to the eminent domain code. The Tank Core Corporation of America subsequently appealed the court's decision to the Commonwealth Court. After reviewing the court's decision with the township solicitor, I move that the Board of, of Commissioners authorize the township solicitor to file a cross appeal in response to the appeal filed by Tank Core Corporation of America on such issues as the township solicitor shall deem appropriate.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Thank you.
My first motion on the, on the, on this issue.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on the motion?
Quick, quick, uh, question for our solicitor. In layman's terms, a cross appeal to an appeal is essentially what?
Well, we felt that the decision rendered by Judge Salz was a very favorable decision to attach it. And I, because of that, I, I guess I kind of predicted.
Sorry. I kind of predicted that, uh, that, that an appeal would be taken. Had an appeal not been taken, we would not have appealed, I, I don't believe. But because they took an appeal, I think we should take an appeal on the, on at least, at least the one issue where the judge did not render a favorable decision to the township. So that there are, um, both an appeal and a cross appeal, and both sides have something to lose if they go forward. Otherwise, we, we would have, um, nothing to argue about and they, they could only improve their situation. Whereas now they have the risk with our cross appeal of having a situation that is not even as good as they have now.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, my last motion is in addition, I move the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township official, officials to arrange to pay into court the amount of the just compensation and fee reimbursement awarded by the court's May eighteen, twenty twenty-one decision in order to prevent any claim from additional compet- in addition, to prevent any claim for additional compensation for delay in the payment in accordance with the eminent domain code. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Another quick question. In terms of, uh, timing, uh, is there any sort of expectation that we can relay to the public when this next round of appeals may be?
I, I, it would be my, um, belief that it would be somewhere between nine and twelve months.
Okay.
And the decision, I, I have one question, Mr. President. And the decision to prevent any, uh, additional, uh, penalties being attached to the township. Is that going to begin as of the day of your appeal or as of May the eighteenth?
As of the, yeah, it only as of the date that we put the money into court.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
Okay, Mr. President, my, uh, last report is my own report on recycling. I'm pleased to report that during the month of August, twenty twenty-one, Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred and sixty point three eight tons of materials with a householder participation rate of sixty-nine point nine percent. The net cost for the month was fifteen thousand, one fifty-three, fifty-three.
Thank you. Nick, please your report then?
Yes, concludes my report.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so next up is, uh, our Chairman of Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have one resolution tonight. Uh, this resolution number, uh, fifteen forty-seven, the Pico Green Region Program. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fourteen, fifteen forty-seven. A resolution authorizing a grant application to be submitted to the Pico Green Region Grant Program in the amount of five thousand dollars. The purpose of this, of the grant is to conduct a township-wide trail study. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? This is, I think, you know, I, I believe that the, the county was charged against something in the neighborhood of four to five thousand dollars for the, the mapping portion, and this would cover at least half of that. Is that right? Yeah, so it's great. Okay, um, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, say nay. All right, please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next we have the Chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Michael Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first item is entry level police officer. I move the Board of Commissioners extend a conditional offer of employment as a probationary police officer in Springfield Township Police Department to Eliza Torres, Neveroe Avenue, Philadelphia, PA, effective October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The condition of employment is successfully passing a physical and psychological examination. This Torres has been employed as a police officer with Philadelphia Police Department since two thousand seventeen, where she is a member of the major incident response team and has completed specialized training in crisis intervention and hazardous material operations. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I just have one comment. I am very appreciative of Chief Pitco's effort along with our township manager uh, in securing a Hispanic female, uh, that speaks fluent Spanish in order uh, to have our police department reflect the diversity of the community. I am very, uh, Chief Pitco, my kudos go out to you and to our township manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, she's a really stellar, uh, candidate. So, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Uh, my next item is resolution number one five four E Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution number one five four eight. Resolution authorizing the execution of a township-wide traffic signal maintenance agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The agreement applies to all traffic signals owned and maintained by the township. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote.
Uh, next item is resolution number one five four nine, disaster declaration. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five four nine. Resolution confirming a disaster declaration issued by the Emergency Management Coordinator in association with remnants of Hurricane Ida on September first, thousand and twenty-one. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
The final item is the state fire parade. I move that the Board of Commissioners grant permission to both the Flower Town and Oregon Fire Companies to attend the Pennsylvania State Farmers Association Parade in Limerick, PA on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Permission must be sought by the fire companies pursuant to section thirty-four dash two point one K of the Springfield Township Code, which requires the fire companies to secure permission from the township when their activities take them further than a twenty mile radius of the township. The permission relates to insurance coverages provided by the township to the fire companies. The two fire chiefs have made arrangements to ensure proper fire coverage. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I have one question. Is the, is the, uh, parade open to the public?
It is.
Okay.
And.
Have you been?
Yes, I used to march in them.
Okay, fun, good family event.
Yes, you get to see, uh, several hundred fire vehicles. I'm not sure what the size of this one's going to be, but, um, if anybody's interested in going, uh, I'm hearing rumors that this may be the last one ever in Pennsylvania. So.
In Pennsylvania?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's now or never?
Yeah. And nice and close.
Yeah, they're close. Yeah, good.
Okay, um.
And that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Okay, next we have the Chairman of our zoning committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the next zoning hearing board of Springfield Township will meet on Monday, September twenty-seventh at seven P M at the Springfield Township Building to receive testimony on the following two applications. The first application is from Bibi Pisani, owner of the property located at eight eleven Pleasant Avenue in Windmore. The applicant has requested a dimensional variance to relocate the existing shared property line with eight thirteen Pleasant Avenue in Windmore and have that property line be the shared party wall of the existing garage. The variances requested are to allow the existing garage to be on the property line and the proposed relocated property line would increase the impervious coverage on the site from sixty point six percent to sixty-one percent. Property zone within the D Residential District of Ward Five. And, uh, the second application is also from, uh, Bibi, Bibi Pisani, owner of the same reference property, uh, this one located eight, eight thirteen Pleasant Avenue in Windmore. Um, and again, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance, uh, to seek approval to relocate the existing shared property line. That is, uh, the shared party wall of the existing garage. Copies of the application are available, available for review in the community development office during norma, normal business offs, hours. And again, those two applications will be heard Monday, September twenty-seventh at seven P M, uh, here in the public meeting room of the township building. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Okay, and finally, we have, uh, report from the Chairman of our Public Works and Facility Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening, although I'd like to add a little bit to your announcement about community day. I don't know if you mentioned it, but this year there will be a dunk tank as part of community day. I will be filling one of the slots. And we'll probably have some other interesting people filling the slots. So I just want the public to know the additional opportunity to inflict pain on various individuals. Part of the fun, so.
Staff too? Is it available to Springfield staff?
I think anyone can throw a ball.
Yeah, I feel eyes coming my way.
Yeah. The first, uh, official item, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a trail maintenance agreement with Troy and Deborah Dobson, uh, eleven-ten Church Road in Orland. The agreement permits the township to construct a paved pedestrian trail along the frontage of the Dobson property. And in exchange, Dobsons have agreed to maintain, repair, and replace the trail, including the removal of snow and ice and the trimming of any vegetation. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the motion?
Just for the sake of the public that this was, um, in relation to the demolition of the old Enfield School, so that this would help have some connectivity from the sidewalk to the adjacent neighborhood.
Yep.
And that these neighbors, uh, you know, were.
Mm-hmm. It's really amazing, wasn't it?
Open and helpful to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Second item, Mr. President, uh, is in relation to the Black Horse Inn. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a lease agreement between Springfield Township and Seven Wall Financial LLC of Flower Town, PA, to lease Suite F, which is the second floor rear of the Black Horse Inn pursuant to the conditions set forth in the lease agreement. The base rent is one thousand per month, including utilities. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Um, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
I also moved that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a lease agreement between Springfield Township and Jeffrey Dean Limited, Lafayette Hill, PA, to lease Suite B, first floor south of the Black Horse Inn pursuant to the conditions set forth in the lease agreement. Base rent is one thousand, one hundred dollars per month plus utilities. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any questions or comments? Okay, and I think that, that brings us back up to a hundred percent occupancy.
I think it does.
So that's great. Yep. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, so that concludes our committee reports and now the board is open to comments or questions from the public? No?
President, I'd like to make a few comments.
Go ahead.
Really?
Yep.
Um, thanks for summarizing the whole land development, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. I know it's probably, you know, we're what, two and a half years since first discussions? I knew Jonathan and I sat in some of the households, um, in some of our first meetings and we were getting absolutely roasted because we were, you know, sort of deciding that we wanted zoning to sort of weigh in and make this decision. Um, I know it's sort of been confusing for everybody, um, especially me. I'm not sure about you guys, but the perception of what the public wants changes almost as the wind blows. They were originally against the assisted living fifty-five and older, which if you pull a good majority of the residents in Springfield, they're looking to stay here that are in that age range, and that would be ideally at the time. That didn't fly.
Just to clarify, Mike, that wasn't assisted living. That was just.
Okay. So then we got into hearing from residents, at least on my side, you know, townhouses. Townhouses weren't it. They didn't want institutional. They didn't want this. They didn't want that. The developer comes back with the plans for the townhouses. The feedback he was getting from a majority of these people who now showed up Monday night and from what I'm told were okay with everything. He was at forty-one. Um, then he came down to thirty-six. Uh, Monday night prior to the meeting, I had the discussion with him and he had to verify with, uh, it's a Chris Cat event from WB Homes. I got them down to thirty-two. And now we have questions about density and what's two and, what, you know, what's intense density? If anybody wants to look at intense density, go to ninety-four, twenty-five Stanton Avenue and look at that development. I know the circumstances in the area aren't the same, but that is an intense developed piece of property. I know that during the discussions that, now, when this all started, there was really no thought of anybody to make a park out of it. Those discussions started, the idea floated out there. We couldn't do it. The school district couldn't do it. That ship has sailed on that idea. It's unfortunate, but.
Well, I mean, to, not to interrupt you, but to, to be absolutely, you know, perfectly clear on the park issue, it has never been fully flushed out, in my opinion. We have, we have never really addressed how much it would cost, how much it would cost the township, what they would accept, you know, it, it's, it, I, I believe is a concept still worth pursuing. That's my personal feeling. Sorry.
Okay. So, Jonathan, me mentioning the other night to some of the residents about how our budget goes with taxing. We don't have a lot of commercial buildings in Springfield Township, good and bad, if you look at it. If we go institutional, we get a nonprofit in there. We're not going to be able to get taxes like we would townhouses. And if my math is sort of average, if they were townhouses up there, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to township would get in taxes from that. That could keep us from raising taxes on things, and it also helps us from raising taxes. I'm pretty sure most of you all figured me out by now, but I look at issues as black and white. There's never a gray area for me. And I'm a believer that seeing is believing. To quote my favorite elf Judy from the Santa Claus, she's right. I sat on this side of the dice years ago during the Lavroch discussions when we were looking at sixty. during the Lavro discussions, when we were looking at sixty some houses.
That, yeah, more than that, it was more than that.
The old township building was packed wall-to-wall, standing room only, out the door and down the hallway. You saw public opposition to the development. When the TC property came up, same thing, packed wall-to-wall, standing room only, out the door, down the hallway. You saw opposition to the development. We had a couple residents come here Monday night. They say they spoke for a majority of people. Okay? I came here on that side of the dice one time to speak for things that were going on in my neighborhood. I didn't show up by myself and say, I'm Mike Maxwell. I represent the fifty-two households on Brookside Route. The people that I represented that night were sitting behind me. And after two-plus hours of public comment, the Board of Commissioners got our issue and where we were at. Now, I don't know what happened Monday night, but if there is this much opposition, and this is where I'm confused. If there is this much negative opposition to townhouses on Holes Lane, where were they Monday night? Because I'm telling you right now, if you're an advocate to this, you don't show up something to raise opposition with five people. And I've heard from people on my side, on your side, that they would rather prefer the townhouses institutional. The people in favor are not gonna come out and say, I'm in favor. The people that are against are gonna show up, so you're not gonna have a hundred people saying, I'm in favor. But if
Well, respectfully, there were people who came.
People, where are they?
Respectfully, there were people who came up and said they were in favor of it.
So now there's word going out, circulating on social media, God love it, as to who the prospective institutional companies are.
Hmm.
And from what I'm told.
I think that's pure speculation. I don't, I don't, don't even believe you should mention that.
Okay, but I'm.
It's pure speculation. There's no, you have no, you have no, you have nothing to back that up, zero.
Well, I can tell you one, because I heard it from the developers' mouth in the discussion this morning, where I was trying to get them down to twenty-nine townhouses. Most of these people that are in opposition to it, I can guarantee you, will probably be selling their houses to move there because of the flooding that just occurred in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's one of the big issues that people have against
But I'm not gonna.
The intense development of the piece.
One of the developments is close by in a neighboring municipality that is the prospective speculation, uh, institutional building. And they got barbed wire wrapped around their facility. Do you want that next to Erdenheim Elementary?
Again, it's not us to de- determine the use of the, of the institute, of what will go on the institutional zoning. With, with the only exception being that what's allowed in our institutional zoning, and it's a fairly broad uh, uh, definition of what institutions are. But so, so there's no guarantee that what you heard, Michael, is, is really what will end up there, or because it hasn't been fleshed out yet. We haven't, I mean, I think one of the biggest problems is, the community has, is they've been, they've been asked to give a, 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 a rendering, an opinion of what they would like more, and they know what, they have, they flushed out the townhouse developments perfectly. They know how many what it's gonna look like, they got plans, they have no idea what the institution's gonna look like.
But how many other municipalities have you seen a developer bend over this much backwards for the community? You don't.
I honestly don't think this developer has bent over at all.
And I can also say that a lot of the mouthpieces that show up here once and you never see again that are hiding on Facebook, hiding on Erdenheim next to work, a lot of what they say is speculation unfounded, not factual to what's going on.
Because we don't have all the facts, because we're only looking at half the, so half the, uh, pie here.
I'm looking at this, what's better for that route, and I know it's not my ward, but if I had to pick or choose, I'm gonna pick the townhouses, especially next to a school. The townhouses can also benefit with traffic. Holes Lane is a disaster traffic-wise. Okay, I wish we.
Already it's a disaster.
I wish we didn't have to file this eighty-fifth percentile, because the great state of Pennsylvania is backwards in every which way there is compared to the rest of the country. But maybe townhouses will give us the increased traffic to add stop signs to slow the traffic down, widen the schools in, which needs to be done, or put a traffic light at church in Holes Lane.
All, all those things can be done without, without the.
Hold on, I'm talking.
Development.
A three-shift institutional facility is not gonna give you the traffic flow, the institute, the safety changes that we can't do.
Again, we'd have no idea, because we have no idea what the institutional use is gonna be.
Correct, and you can't compare it to Harston Hall either, which some of the residents were doing here on night. I gotta tell you, it's a three-shift shift-change facility, that you don't see a lot of people going to visit anybody at Harston Hall. I don't know if anybody's been there, but I used to take the children there for St. Jen's and St. Christmas carols. People go there to die. Is it a deplorable facility? If there was some sort of oversight to these facilities in the state, that would be closed down because of the deplorable conditions it did. And then you'd have a bigger piece of land to build more houses.
More townhouses, yeah.
So.
But you could build another thirty-eight or forty townhouses when they close down Harston Hall.
But we'd be in a situation if that property was de-residential, which they would get more townhouses in there than what they came down to thirty-two, I think. Would the people be going, no, we don't want the institutional? Would the argument be on the other side?
Again, we have no idea what the institutional use is gonna be. Maybe it's gonna be a high-quality, uh, uh, nursing home.
Correct, and maybe it could be the fifty-five and order that he originally wanted.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be allowed in ours, in the zoning of our institution.
Sister living?
Sister living is, sure.
So, but we don't know what the neighbors want either, because they're.
Well, because the neighbors have been not given a choice.
Spectrum on this, Peter.
Yeah, but the, the neighbors aren't a monolith. Every, people have different opinions.
And they're listening to like three mouthpieces that are completely off the radar on what's going on. And one of them was your opponent in the primary. He's completely off the rails on this. He's just cranking the pot and cranking the pot and cranking the pot.
I, I would encourage, I would encourage all people listening to, if they have questions, present them to their commissioners, and we will get, we will get the answers, the correct answers for you.
Mike, do one thing about Monday, just to be fair, we, we ever, like, based on what we knew last week, we were announcing it, it was on the agenda.
Oh, I know, I know.
To pull it, so I wouldn't fault someone not coming out.
And I've had conversations with, I'm not sure if Jonathan has read that, but I've had a conversation with Brian since he had the first meeting at the question club that nobody showed up to. Nobody showed up, and nobody could have cared that he was putting that facility in. Then he decided to have another meeting on the benefit of the township, not defending the guy, but he decided to have another meeting to be that guy who was looking at for his township. And somebody decided they didn't like this, and they were gonna crank and crank and crank and crank, and here we are two and a half years later. I'm just saying to you guys, I'm looking this way. If I had to vote on it, I'm taking the townhouses. Do you guys think it's a better idea for that spot? So that's my comments on the situation.
Then what?
If that was your.
Better than what?
Based on what, what.
Institutional facility that, listen, we sat down, can you correct me if I'm wrong here? We sat on Green Hill. We stood out in the middle of the street with what, fifteen, twenty-five people? And they pointed to the trees and said, if there's an institutional building up there, I won't see those trees, I'll see a four-story building. So do you wanna see a four-story building there? Well, wanna see, and, and I'm not knocking mental facilities or, or drug rehab facilities, but do you wanna?
Again, pure speculation.
You wanna have something there that's, you know.
Pure speculation.
Whatever it is, it's institutional, whatever the institution, you wanna see something there that could predict, uh, potentially have an impact on the school in a negative way or the neighborhood in a negative way?
So would you consider the cluster residential district for that?
What, A or B?
No, there's a specific cluster.
Like residential, right?
Meant for for townhomes and, and, well, clustered housing.
Again, it's not zoned for that.
I'm saying neither was, you mentioned.
It's not zoned for that.
Neither was the TC track, but this board made a text amendment, changed it to the against the will of the community.
I think the TC was, I think the TC was always residentially zoned.
The TC, that, the TC was, was changed in the community.
But it was always residential, it wasn't institutional, am I right? It was never institutional. TC was never institutionally zoned, was it?
It was zoned residential for single-family dwellings.
Right.
The change allowed for townhouses.
And, and I, I bet you could get people to agree to single-family homes on that, on that, uh, five acres of ground. I bet you could. Easy. Talk your buddy into, uh, making a, uh, single-family homes.
He's not my buddy.
Look, I'm just, I'm just offering.
I, if I could just add my two cents, and I know that it's not my ward, um, but, um, I, I, I know I, I'm in, I was in receipt of a, at least ten uh, emails, uh, asking this board to not consider developing on that land. And I guess I have the arcane uh, view of democracy that we are, we, it's not our will, but we are to represent the will of the people that elected us to this office. So having saying that, I'm going to vote as to what the residents would like to have in that, in that particular spot, because it's not my decision
Okay.
to say that. But based on the majority of the residents, that is how my vote is going to go.
I think, then I think we should talk about a referendum to change this, to change the zoning on this track then.
To what? To prevent what?
No, a referendum to change the zoning. We should put it out to, if, if, if Eddie's is the right idea, we should put it out to the entire township, saying, what do you wanna do here? Because obviously, we can't, we, we can't make our minds up. A, a lot of the, a lot of the, you're getting conflicting signals from a lot of the residents. I, I'd say, I'd say put it up for a vote.
Well, you can change the zoning, but the, but the current development or the developers are grandfathered in under the old law or the old rule, so that's not gonna stop that.
The, with the old rule being institutional.
Right.
Yeah.
And even under the institutional, it still has to come before the board to, for approval, am I correct?
No, no, that's actually.
Under a land development, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is, yes. That's what I thought. You can't, a developer just can't come in and say, hey,
No.
it's institutional, I'm putting this here, and we have no insight into that.
Yeah, we are not.
So.
But, but that's at the planning level, not, not at the zoning level, not.
Well, doesn't the planning, doesn't that come to the board for approval?
Yeah, but, but.
I just say, okay, go ahead. It, it's just, yes, yes, Eddie, you're right.
Yeah.
But however, if the develop, oops, I'm sorry.
If the developer complies with the zoning ordinance, they're entitled to approve, period.
Yeah, they're entitled to approval after it comes before this board.
Right.
And re-review it and say, hey, I'm okay with that. But if we, if we, even under the institutional zoning that it's under now, if this board is not in agreement with it, then we go back to the board. They can't just say, hey, I'm building here anyway.
But they follow the code, you don't have a base.
With all due respect, that's exactly what they can do.
I would challenge that.
Make it, if, if, if they comply with the terms of the zoning ordinance, you don't have any discretion.
Then I, I would challenge that, and, and I would ask whatever, I mean, whoever is the solicitor at that time to, to challenge that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I was bringing up the point of townhouses, because we can take that option off the table.
And, and, Mr. President, um, echoing your eloquent kind of summation of the years that brought us to this point, um, the, the previous iteration of this board, which I guess no, nobody here was on it at that time, tried to fight it and lost those appeals in court, which is why we have what we have today, which essentially binds this process to that, that type of plan, correct?
No, 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 that's over. There's, there's no plan, there's no approve, my understanding, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. There's no approved plan at this point in time for that tract of ground. All, all of the approvals have expired.
Um, there, um, that, that's not entirely correct. What, what the vested rights in Section five oh eight of the MPC says is that basically approvals are good forever. However, they're not protected from intervening zoning changes after five years. And that five years, to my knowledge, expired July twenty-one of this year. So any intervening zoning changes would have, uh, would now bind the property.
So if we're not changing any zoning via ordinance, they can, that plan is approved.
No, that plan would have to come back in. Would have to come back in and, and get approved again, because the five years has has expired, but it would only be subject to the zoning ordinance, which, which exists on the date the plan is filed.
I think that specific plan, I think that ship has sailed, the developers even said such, that that's not really.
No, it's a viable, viable plan, no, it's not.
It's subject to the existing zoning, and that's that.
Yeah, it was never a good plan.
But they, but if they comply with existing zoning and we decide to change the zoning, they're still grandfathered in under this zoning, maybe not the plan.
If, if they file a plan before you change the zone.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, correct.
Right. Yeah, it's complicated.
It is.
Yeah, it's no, it's no wonder, it's no wonder the public doesn't understand it. We're not even sure we understand it.
Good point.
Okay, well, any other comments on that? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Nay, okay. Please record a unanimous vote. We are.